States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, my nation. I'm gonna, I'm invisible with liberty and justice for our own.
Thank you for coming. I mean, we have online.
All right. Okay. Let's make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any questions on tonight's agenda? All in favor? Are opposed?
Make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from the May twenty first meeting.
Second.
Any question on the regular board meeting minutes of May twenty one? All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Are you opposed? So. We're all working toward the strength of the seventeen. All right. Uh, elementary. Kristen.
All right. Short and sweet. But just a little celebration is certainly a season of celebrating talent. So our kindergarten through fifth grade had their chorus concerts, third, fourth, fifth will have their strings concert this evening. As you can see, we welcomed a new member, Free. Free, that's his name, Hank. Hank is here. Free Labor, who has been working magic with kids. So thank you to Mrs. Kay and Hank for joining. He was snoring this afternoon after he. But he, you know, he really, he connects with a lot of kids. He helps to move kids through a lot of big emotions. I, we are just so thankful for the support of everybody here to have Hank with us, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, John, you've got it. I will stop.
Oh. So again, just the celebrations, lots of field trips. I had the pleasure of going on a first grade field trip today to Stony Brook. No rain in the forecast, but it did rain. But it was beautiful. The kids had an amazing time there. A lot of families were there, so it was very exciting. And as we continue celebrations, you know, we are getting into the digital exploration era, which is very exciting for, to support our STEAM work. So we had some students who were recognized at the Digi's award. Oliver McCully, Aubrey Dunham, and Elise Wilson, as well as Zelda in fourth grade. So we're very excited to honor them, and we have a few things to share that they have, that they submitted. And this was a first grader, first grade team, and they won first place on this little short story, so. I think I saw it down there. Should be a little. There we go.
Don't get them.
Wow. Very low construction. So that they're students in Mrs. Will Cox's class who taught them the skill and they just ran with it. So if you think about all of the literacy components that are, are of that is just top notch. So they were very excited. It was excellent. And then another first grader created his own little critter library where he's reading stories to share with the world. So he, YouTube stories where he's reading aloud, talk about developing confidence. So, and then we had Zelda in fourth grade. My goodness. She created some memes. She also creates memes for administrators and sends them out. And yeah, it, and she, she makes us laugh. So she received third place. So what's amazing is sometimes students can be quite quiet in the classroom and then they find their, their path, their niche, and they just come alive. And that's what we've been able to see with these students. Mrs. Will Cox is here and started to take a look at this.
Um, I would just say that the projects, the move, the silent film that the kids created and the digital listening library, the digital listening library truly came out of COVID. So a ton of teachers made these digital listening libraries to share with their students when they were virtual. And I post a new one every week that's themed and Oliver took that and mimicked it himself and recorded all the books on his own, which was hours of reading for him to be able to finish those little critter books. So at the time, they were two levels above grade level expectation for that time of the year. And then the silent film, you can see the spelling in there that the kids used. And when we talk about technology in our schools and how important it is, I think a lot of time we think like, oh, that, that one to one Chromebook device. But none of this was made on a Chromebook. This was made on iPads. This was made with apps that the district has purchased, like Stop Motion Studio. And I was really born out of win time, which stands for what I need. So in the elementary school, we have that time and we talked about a genius hour project and I showed them some examples and the girls, you know, were really interested in silent movies back in the day because like something would happen and the text would pop up on the screen and something would happen and the text would pop up on the screen. So that was their version of their own silent movie. So they were beyond creative. Like I just, I was blown away by this group of kids and, and someone in my classroom has been recognized by the Digi's every year for the last six years. But I would say that these projects are top of the line, best of the best that I've seen in the years that we've competed, so.
Very impressive.
All right. And then just to touch, I always like to touch a little bit on this because that's the part of, it's my first year plan. And just wanted to share that we've had some great family connection chats, both Mrs. Flowers and myself, Mrs. Kay. Sometimes we have staff, parents. We're meeting currently once a month to just talk about how to best support the needs across our elementary primary levels. So born from this, we have provided talking points for families, telling any sort of significant incidents within the classrooms, increasing transparency and communication between the schools and families. We have developed a community task force where we have five parents that will be sitting on that, five staff members, and then we will be bringing in five students. So, and then we also have been highlighting safety students of the week with Officer Hopper. So that has been really exciting. We're recognizing students who are consistently meeting safety responsibility and respectful expectations, which are our values district wide, but also the, the students are most improved. So give them something to work for. Okay. Okay. Questions at all?
How long is the community task force been?
So we just collected, we just notified all the families on May thirty first and the staff members who's a part of that. And if they aren't standing members on the committee, we invited them to be virtual members so that we would still could continue if so, we have surveys, we'd like to collect information, we can send that out and they still have a voice. So we wanted to be able to include everybody. And then our first meeting will be this summer.
That's a good question for the, you mentioned there's students that are on the task force as well. Are the older students like the mentors for the younger kids that we've seen in the past or is this?
The goal is that they would be elementary. Yeah, yeah, that they will, we will have one represented at each grade level. That would be the ultimate goal, so that they all feel they have just an experience in leadership, which is one of our values. They, they know what's going on right at that level. They know more than anybody else, so. Having a voice and having their voice heard is key, so.
Spend our delight at their projects to the students because not everybody. Forward to it. There is the creativity.
There you go.
Oh. Not everybody makes the board laugh, so well done for that.
Thank you. Megan? For yours.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm looking forward to wearing a different hat this summer than I have done at Genesio. So as the elementary summer program administrator, just wanted to give you an overview. So we have our two programs, our general education summer school program that runs for four weeks from July eighth through the first. That's Monday through Thursday, eight thirty to eleven thirty. And as of now, we ended up with about six classrooms and sixty-six students in that program. With our extended school year, we have a six week program, five days a week, still eight thirty to eleven thirty. And that's three classrooms, two eight one ones and a six one one. You have a wonderful array of summer school staff. As you can see, a lot of veterans and some newcomers and a delightful mix of classroom teachers, teaching assistants, aides, special education teachers who will run the three E S Y classrooms. We will have asshole support this year, part time with Becca and Terry Gates will return as our nurse. One additional component is that as of last year with senior privileges, so I'm on kind of both opposite ends of the spectrum here, we reinstated community service hours. And not just any, we wanted those hours to be done in school. So it's in school service hours for seniors to obtain and keep their senior privileges. So we wanted that either peer to peer connection with students here or reinvesting in some capacity at G C S. So for the class of twenty twenty five, they will have the opportunity to volunteer as extra support in summer classrooms. So not only does it give them a chance to get those hours completed ahead of time, but it kicks off the year with already making those elementary to high school connections. This is a general schedule for a typical day. Arrival at eight thirty, breakfast, hallway meetings, community circles. It'll be a myriad of gross motor, fine motor experiences, math and reading and writing instruction. And then we'll dismiss at eleven thirty with lunch on the go. The special component this year that we thought would be really important, considering the culture and climate at the elementary, is to incorporate our mental health team. So since they're already in over the summer, we have met and worked out a four day rotation where Monday through Thursday, one of our mental health team members will on Monday or Tuesday push into a classroom for a thirty minute lesson, typically surrounded by a character strong element. And then on Wednesday and Thursday, they'll go into that same classroom during that time, but just for added classroom support. For staff, they will have the opportunity to complete a three hour asynchronous course from Bosie's Learning Through Play. And so this is to encourage a foundation that Christie's really started with the elementary and trying to inspire more attendance and increase that rate and make kids feel like they have that positive connection that they want to get to school. So if our foundation can be learning through play and we can empower our teachers with creating, incorporating, designing more play, challenge, and steam based learning, then that hopefully will help. The next three slides go through pre-assessments and instructional goals at each level. So basically, they will have a pre-assessment and post-assessment done to measure and monitor the instructional goals at each grade level. That report will go home at the end of the program, so parents are aware of that progress. For the next, again, the, the next slide to these, really just an overview about the curriculum that we'll be using. And for our math instruction will be grounded in our Bridges curriculum. And for our reading and writing instruction, we will really use the platform of Science of Reading and a lot of the new curriculum components that the elementary has adopted because of that. So obviously, we will have some special events to continue that excitement. We will have a canine and fire department day. We will have a published author who will come in and work with students in small groups for writers workshops. We'll have a visit from the mobile zoo, Stokie Farms, and we'll culminate the experience with some bounce house fun. And that's all because of G C F and P T S A. I mean, those are more than generous donations that they were given to us for those purposes, so we appreciate that very much. We will also try and really take advantage of the lovely steam room. And one thing we'll do in there is our morning announcements with the green screen and try to enlist a class on rotational basis to be the leaders of those announcements. We'll also be, has anyone a fan of the masked singer? So they dress up and, and then you have no idea who's singing, so we're gonna do a play on that. Yep. We're gonna do a play on that with a masked reader, so a different teacher will read every week and we'll incorporate the green screen for that as well and a little science fun mixed in. And that's basically an overview of the program. I'm very thankful to be a part of it. I appreciate your trust and faith and without you, this would not exist. I look forward to coming back at the end of summer and reporting on the success.
Looks like it might be so much fun. You're gonna have an increase in attendance next year.
We'll just go year round schooling. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Think that's hers is probably better than mine anyway, but you know.
Very soon.
All right. So our Board of Education update, so for the first time ever, we've had, we have eight track athletes attending states. Is that, that's the highest number, correct, Greg?
Correct.
For individuals, so just wanna commend our, our track athletes. We have Simon Aguilera, help Caleb Bryce, Carolyn Capel, Natalie Capel, Emily Lamb, Rachel Matthews, Catherine Stanley, and Sierra Whitney. They had the state qualifiers in Newark this weekend and it was wonderful to watch our students compete. They, they just did such a phenomenal job. And when you're seeing the best of the best of section five and, and our students performing so well, it was just amazing, like time and time again, you just saw a Genesio student in, in the front. So that team has worked hard. Congratulations to the coaches as well, but we wish them well on June seventh and eighth. Is that correct, Mr. Bailey?
Where, where is it? Sister all about serving. Okay.
So our playground work continues. So you'll see that they have the base footing in, they do have the drainage system in. In the lower left corner is a beautiful maple tree. And that beautiful maple tree did stall some of our work as the roots were in, in the area where we were needed to put drainage. So to save, an attempt to save the tree, we air spaded the roots, which means they, they cut some off, they add a lot of fertilizer and they're, they are attempting to save the tree while making sure that we have proper drainage in our playground area. We are also going to plant two other trees in case it doesn't work, but we felt it was important to try and keep that tree. It does provide a lot of shade in its tree. So that's the playground. Again, this is what it'll look like when it's done, minus the or in place rubber, we will have mulch for our playground. And the capital improvement project, the bridge work is completed. So this is how people will now enter into our bleachers. This is a flat bridge, so you can access walking or wheelchair can access the bleachers this way. This is where the concourse is. This is where you would, if you are in a wheelchair or use a walker, you could stop and sit in this area. And then, oh, this one picture did not come up. I apologize. There was another picture that saw you, the, the side view, because there's additional bleachers and it gave you a better perspective. Track repairs start this week. The good news is our track is getting repaired. It has to be done by June thirtieth because we are using our local capital project money to complete this work. The bad news is you just saw the status of our playground. So by shutting off the track for repairs for two weeks, we've now taken away one more space from our elementary students. So ultimately, it's a good reason that it is getting repaired, but unfortunately, it is taking space away from, from our students. So just asking everyone to be patient as we do move forward. And then I just wanted to keep everyone on the board in the loop in regards to our future capital improvement project next steps. We had talked at one point about potentially having an October twenty twenty four vote. And the reason I wanted to show you the schedule is that things need to happen quickly if we do stick with that October vote. And that is not meant to pressure the board into making any rash decisions. I just want everyone to be on the same page with how quickly these dates will come up. So you can see that conceptual design phase really should be taking place now. We do have some conceptual designs, but actually, you know, the conceptual estimates are also taking place. Final design seeker process needs to be done forty-five days as well as those legal notices. So we just wanna be conscientious of, of those timeframes if we do want to continue with the October vote date. We had also discussed a December vote, so I just also provided those dates as well, just so you have that, that information. And we do have Brock and Gary here today from campus and they can just give us an update on where we are with our project.
So currently, S C I is Cindy indicated, it's two conceptual designs that we have in our board. So our estimating right now is projecting, I think, two weeks to have an estimate done and we will reconcile that with S C I and then be able to report back by the end of this month to where those two conceptual ideas or designs are coming in landing on budget. Anything to add to that?
No, I mean, Kyle, S E I has been working on their needs assessment that is asked by the board. So that was all compiled, they have a draft that we all went over last week. So just trying to finalize that, part of that would be the one A and one B design estimate. So the district has a few things, facilities department needs to kind of prioritize some things, so.
So a couple of comments. First off, I'd like to see the needs assessment. That would be good for the board to see in, in least review it at the high level. I haven't, we haven't seen the conceptual design, one, one A. So I'd like to see those as well. And as a start, I'd like Kevin to start joining some of the project meetings to sit through and we may rotate another board member on occasion. At least for now, please have Kevin join you, whatever the schedule is. I don't know what that is. If it fits his schedule, if not, one of the other, one of us can, can fit it, fill in. All right?
Yeah, so the needs assessment is still in draft form. I have reached out to Ted and Kyle to see if they can come to the June seventeenth board meeting to do a presentation on the needs assessment. The conceptual drawings haven't been presented because we don't have the cost associated with those. So we will absolutely have those available on June seventeenth as well. You know, one of the things that
Would you like to see the needs before the June meeting? We can have the open discussion, that's great, but let's have an opportunity to be with you.
Um, one of the things that I was, was going to share was that they are also in the process of working on the future building condition survey. And, you know, I did send financial cost estimates from our financial advisors, fiscal advisors. And my concern is that when we get through the building condition survey, the needs assessment and what we need to do, we will be well over what will most likely be an affordable project for us. And that's one the board will really need to prioritize besides the gym. And so really, the two, the two concepts talk about just replacing those block walls or replacing those block walls and doing a little bit of a reconfiguration for a better use of space. Then what other components need to be added in? For example, the boilers, are we doing a secure entrance? And then again, just lots of events taking place. We do know that we're trying to wrap up the meeting by seven o'clock to be at the strings concert. So those are just the events and again, they are on the website. And any other questions?
Anything else?
What was the date for the, the awards assembly?
The awards is June, next Monday.
One June, okay, thanks, thanks.
Now, is there another one at six P M? There's the spring athletic words at five fifteen. Okay. And then the high school words.
Okay.
See that? Megan, data audit finance?
Yeah, we met tonight before this meeting and nothing really in particular. We just talked more with, with budget done now. We just had a chance to talk more, bigger picture, longer term. And part of, Cindy touched on, part of what we were discussing is how do we get, you know, the budget isn't, it's not going down our expenses. So how do we get to where we can also allocate money to, to do some of these, these projects that need to be done, like the boilers? And then not get ourselves to the point where we were at a near emergency point. So that, that building condition survey will, will help guide us once that's all done to what those numbers are and how do we, you know, how do we allocate a certain amount of, what, what amount of money do we need to allocate annually to, to cover that sort of repair and maintenance expense?
So part of the boilers on tonight for discussion?
Yes.
Or for promoting?
Yeah.
Financially?
Scott did relate to us that he does, that they haven't gotten back to him with solid numbers or, well, really a scope.
We don't have a scope. We have an idea.
Exactly, going to get done.
But I, so was this a not to exceed number or? I think you should do a range and not to exceed and kind of go high, but that's, you know, up for discussion. And so we also just got information today too, that it will not be aided over one year. The state did not declare an emergency, so that aid will happen over fifteen years, whatever the cost is. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Kevin, any policy update?
Now we'll pick back up with policy after the organizational meeting.
Okay.
We did, we take some, we are all fifty-five percent policies to review.
Good.
Up that structured, so we're in good shape. We'll make that one. Slide down.
Awesome, thank you. Anything on G C F?
Just that their gratitude, well, yes, oh, my gosh. They, and we have put on our social media, all the different events that they did sponsor this year. We're actually doing that for all of our organization, P T S A, G C F. But there is the cards for gratitude that every year that we've been, this is our third year of doing that. So if you'd like to thank the teacher, please throw up a reading card of gratitude. It's, it's a very meaningful event that they do for us every year.
It is, I, you know, I've thought a lot about it personally and I'm thinking how many teachers do we have? And how many cards?
Five hundred and one.
That's be a lot of writing. I think that's my view, but so far, good point. Thank you. Also?
Also?
Okay. David?
Personnel?
Hey, on the personnel, I'd like to make a motion to approve items seven point zero two and seven point one zero.
Second?
Any questions on any of the personnel resignations, advisors? Pointing to another teacher. Elementary teacher.
What is that question? Will there be like an exit interview with the, the teacher that's resigning?
We have, I mean, we have every employee that's left, we're gonna give them exit interviews, so.
All in favor? All right. Are you opposed? So.
Your new business? I'm your new business. I'd like to make a motion to approve items eight point zero two through eight point one zero.
Second?
So just under eight point zero five. This is the boiler. And specifically, it says not to exceed three twenty-five. Is that the right number that you're recommending or? We saw what, three fifty in there randomly today, so that's what was sent to the state. I would think, you know, the, the original quote came in at two fifty. That's what was sent to the state. Um, I would think, you know, the, the original quote came in at two fifty. And imagine it's gonna be seventy-five thousand dollars more, but I've seen weirder things, so. Um, if need be, I think you could come back to this and make a, an amend, amendment to it and then up the N T to whatever the actual cost would be, but I really, as I told you in the finance committee uh meeting, I really wanna see that scope and what we're paying for, what we're getting for what we're paying. And until that happens, I don't feel confident, and, I mean, I think this number is still good. But I, I really wanna know what that accelerator is in that email. Okay, so we're, we're approving the not-to-exceed amount pending any further review and, and update from yourself.
I was definitely depending if, as an emergency project.
That's the first step, yeah.
That this needs to move forward so that we can hit the school.
Okay. All right. And finance, are you in the specific accounts and all that, you guys? Yeah, we haven't reviewed specific accounts, but we definitely have the money there out of reserves that we can utilize and then get that money back over fifteen years. Okay, any other questions on uh these items? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nine point zero one. Movement project.
I think we can just say that you, you know, at this point, the board is waiting on to have the needs assessment presented, the um cost estimates of the two proposed drawings and then to see the drawings.
So that's the seventeenth, we can have that open discussion about needs. Cost. All right. Anything else before we enter into the executive session?
Can we go back to Christie's presentation, because we have a special presenter? I'd like to present to you Oliver McPolly. Oliver is a first grader in uh my classroom currently. He uh was inspired to create his Little Critter library. And we'll go to yours.
This is under your page, is that correct? This is uh, Wilcox.
Under my page.
Is it under your um, your YouTube page?
Uh, yeah, it's on my, yeah, but it's, it's um, like uh, hidden, so like you have to have the link to view. If you want, I can pull it up in a separate, in a second. Let me show you all my passwords.
So can you share with the board and with all of us? What inspired you?
About reading.
Yeah. What, what inspired you to choose the Little Critters?
Because I like their stories.
What's your favorite story? Or your favorite character?
Definitely the Little Critter.
The Little Critter, what's the Little Critter? How would you describe him?
He's funny.
He's funny? Yeah. How big is he?
Very big.
Little bigger? Is that big?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so let's talk about what you did to um, to make your project, because they're gonna pull up the ones so we can actually click on some buildings. So how did your project get started? What did you have to do first to be able?
I had to read a ton of books.
And how did you pick those books?
By taking them off the shelf.
So in our classroom, we have bins, right, that are sorted by different themes or different characters. There's a gold bin versus Little Critter, and I remember you came to me with a stack that was probably this big and you're like, I'm gonna read all of these ones, and I was like. And you picked out, do you remember how many?
Six.
You picked up six. We set that as our goal because we knew that we had only a certain amount of time to do it. So then you said that you read a bunch of books, but how did you read them to get them onto the computer?
I recorded.
Yeah. Yep, yes, so uh, you go in the hallway, right, where it was quieter, and you would read the books during reading time. And then we would take those recordings, and do you remember what we did with them?
And we put them in a library case.
Yeah, and we put them on a YouTube. So students at this age level do not have access to YouTube to be able to upload videos, so what we would do is we would email them to me and I would use my teacher account to be able to access uh YouTube to be able to put them on there. And then all of the links are unlisted, so if you went online and you searched my name in this video, it would never come up unless you have the direct link. So it provided student privacy, but then also the ability to share with people that we wanted to be able to share the project with. Now, talk about for me this background, what's going on here?
Wanna go back to that?
Yep. Yeah, so how did you create this background?
I searched up little school, so.
So one of the I S T standards, which is the technology standards for first grade, is to be able to pull images offline and be able to use them. So using a Google slide, Oliver was able to type in different things that he wanted to search, and you searched for a bookcase. I don't remember what you searched for the background, do you remember? I think we just searched like school supplies or something.
Yes.
Yeah, and then you were able to search for an image of Little Critter. And do, is there a particular book that you like the most that you wanna show off?
Yes, just a storm.
Just a storm, okay. So if you go back to the library and then click on the book, it links directly to the YouTube.
A storm was coming. We saw dark clouds and lightning in the distance. Let's shut the weather channel, said Mom. The weather cutter said, a big storm with light saying it hauls will pass right over Carrville. We better get ready for anything, Dad says. We made these power, Dad checks all the flashlights. Little sister and I got water buckets for the toilet. We put a sign up that read, remember a poor water intake before you flush. We filled up pots and sinks drinking water. And put up a sign on the fridge that said, do not open. Then we rescued stuff from our yard. The wind began blowing, blew our yard. Yep.
But you can hear the excellence, and we want to see, we talk about it, speed and accuracy, being able to read at a pace that's like a talking pace, and you also have good, what we say is intonation. You sound like you're a real person talking when you read your book. Toilet water. So, um, Oliver received first place for this award, and would you say that this has inspired you to do anything else like this in the future, or?
Yes.
What other series would you maybe highlight for other kids in the class?
Probably Harry Potter.
Hmm, that'd be a good one. You could do chapter by chapter. Yeah, so we posted this into our Google Classroom, so all the kids in the class could listen to Oliver's stories and they loved it, wouldn't you say so? Yeah, they couldn't believe that you read them all. I know. So, you know, in maybe ten to fifteen years, if you check out an audiobook, it may be read by Oliver McPolly, who knows? You may have a professional career.
Oliver, you are in class. Are you going into twelfth grade this year?
Maybe second. I'll be joining you in second, so maybe I can, maybe I can talk Mrs. Newman to putting her in class.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Oliver, for sharing that. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion when we enter into executive session to talk about the superintendent's evaluation and I think it'd be good to ask uh, Mrs. Mespero to join us.
Second?
Hey, all in favor?